I call the Fall 2022 Special Town Meeting Order. My name is Jay Tallerman. I am your town moderator. I declare that the warrant has been duly posted and published and that the reading of the warrant is hereby waived. Thank you all for being here tonight and doing the important business for the town of Norfolk. A few introductions. Here we have to my left Carol Green, our town clerk, and Rebecca Teft with her. At the big table, we've got Todd Lindmark, our finance director. We've got, and can we please give a big hearty special welcome to our new town administrator, Justin Casanova-Davis? Much success to you. Next to Justin, we've got select board members, Kevin Calcutt, Anita Mecklenburg, and we've got our town council, Tom and Alex on the end. In front of the stage, we have the advisory board, which will make most of the motions tonight, and they've prepared recommendations on most of the motions tonight. And Sue Klein is the chair of the advisory board. Rules for town meeting, pretty similar to what we always do. We are governed by town meeting time and local bylaws. I'll explain any procedures that people need to be explained. I will recognize a point of order if at any point you're confused or you have a concern as to the particular procedures that are going on. Again, motions will be made primarily by the advisory board with some exceptions. We have a device in Norfolk and many towns called a motion for indefinite postponement. If you hear that tonight, that means that essentially someone is moving to postpone a consideration of an article indefinitely, which essentially would kill that article if you voted in favor. Those who will make, who make the motions will have their first opportunity to explain the rationale for their motion, so they will stay at the mic and do that. Motions to amend generally must be in writing, provided that for ministerial clerical corrections, I may accept a friendly amendment and will help with procedure. If you have a more complex amendment, it will have to be in writing, and between myself and Carol, we will make sure that that gets in proper form. To the extent that we have debate tonight, I will try and balance it as best we can between pros and cons, so that we can get a good flavor for what you all are thinking. Everyone has a chance to speak on a matter, but at a certain point, I may want to avoid repetition. There is a maximum generally of five minutes. The first time to the mic, three minutes of the second time at the mic. I may allow a little more time, and I may move you along even if you haven't hit your max time if I think we are getting repetitive. I may even allow someone to speak a third time if they have new information, but I may also limit you to just two times. All comments and questions come through the moderator, come up to a mic, give your name and address at least the first time you speak. Let's have some spirited debate as we work through the challenges that are going to be presented. No personal comments, and all comments must be civil and respectful. I want to hear your facts that you can present. I want to hear your opinions. I don't want to hear what you think someone else's opinion is or to characterize someone else's opinion. We've got a bunch of local officials here tonight, and between myself and them, we will try and get any questions answered that need to be answered. When debate is done on a motion, we will do a voice vote. I will ask for a show of hands. If I can't tell by voice vote, you don't have to yell. We should be able to figure this out. If I still can't discern from a show of hands, I may ask you to stand, and we will count the vote as necessary. If you think that I called a vote improperly and seven voters stand, we will count that vote within reason. So I do respect either a motion to call the question or a cutoff debate. However, if I think it's premature and there's still some debate out there and there's people standing at the mics, I will hold that motion in abeyance. If that motion happens, it is two-thirds to pass. I may cut off debate on my own, as I said previously, if I think we are going on too long. I do allow motions for reconsideration. That is a motion to reconsider a prior vote, either positive or negative. However, I will reject any motion for reconsideration unless the movement can provide new facts and a reason why they weren't presented initially, i.e., I will allow motions to reconsider sparingly. There's a bunch of handouts out front. If you didn't get them, feel free to go get them. They are helpful, and I believe everyone got mailed materials as well. I'm very confident that we can deal with the town's business in one evening and perhaps even have you home before nine tonight. So with that, we're ready to get going, and Article One is unpaid bills. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move to indefinitely postpone Article One.
Is there a second? Mr. Lutz?
There are no outstanding bills at this time, and therefore, we do not need to act on this article.
Any questions? Seeing none, this requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes unanimously. Article Two, Mr. Lutz, budget transfers.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer the sum of $420,000, $442,000 from free cash to the following accounts or for the following purposes. The sum of $150,000 to be transferred to the stabilization fund, the sum of $120,442 to be used for the payment of a bond anticipated note, the sum of $75,000 to be transferred to the OPEB trust fund, and the remainder to be added to the facilities departmental budget for the current fiscal year.
Is there a second? Mr. Lutz? And for reference, I believe all of those transfers are up on the screen.
There are a small number of transfers that are listed. The advisory committee got a presentation from the town administrator and the finance director on these, and we feel confident that they're being spent wisely.
Questions, comments on Article Two? Mr. Rosenberg?
David Rosenberg, North Street. Would you tell me what OPEB stands for?
It's for future obligations that the town will be covering for current and future retirees of town government.
Seeing no other questions or comments at the mics, this requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes unanimously. Article Three, Mr. Lutz?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve the salaries and wages identified in the collective bargaining agreement between the town and the Norfolk Municipal Clerical Association, AFL-CIO Local 310, for the period of July 1st, 2021 to June 30th, 2024.
Mr. Lutz?
This would fully fund the contract that the town has signed with the clerical union through the end of fiscal 2024.
Questions, comments on approval of the funding for this contract? Seeing none, requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes unanimously. Article Four, capital with borrowing. Mr. Lutz?
Mr. Moderator, I move to indefinitely postpone Article Four.
Is there a second? Mr. Lutz?
Article Four would allow the town to borrow cash through, outside of the levy limit. We are not proposing any borrowing at this time outside the levy limit.
Questions, comments on indefinite postponement? Seeing none, requires a majority vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no? It passes unanimously. Article Five, capital not borrowing. Mr. Lutz?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer the sum of $1,232,000 as follows. $1,192,000 to be transferred from free cash and $40,000 to be transferred from ambulance receipts reserved to fund the capital expenditures as shown on the screen in front of the audience.
It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Lutz?
Mr. Moderator, the town administrator and town finance director came before the advisory committee, and we went through these in detail. There were questions on a number of these, but at the end of the discussion, the board voted in favor of supporting this article with one abstention and one opposition.
So any questions on comments or questions or comments on either the whole or any individual line items here? Seeing none, easy group tonight. Requires a simple majority. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no? It passes. Article Six, an acceptance of some funds. Mr. Bichkovsky?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town appropriate $1,800 received from the Commonwealth Transportation Infrastructure Enhancement Trust to fund, to fund, fund to address the impact of transportation network services on municipal roads, bridges, and other transportation infrastructure in the town.
It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Bichkovsky?
This article allows the town to accept funds generated as fees from ride-sharing apps such as Uber and Lyft, and can be used to, to support the infrastructure such as road maintenance. The advisory committee supports acceptance of this money and using it for the stated
Questions, comments on Article Six? Mr. Rosenberg?
Thank you. Do you have any estimate of how much money is involved in this? I mean, I understand you can't know, but...
$1,800.
I'm sorry, how much?
$1,800.
Thank you.
Seeing no other questions or comments requires a majority vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no? It passes unanimously. Article Seven is when we allow committee reports. There's no motion here. I believe we have at least two reports tonight. We'll start with the, I believe the fire station building committee has a brief update
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Kevin Champagne, Two Seneca Street, the Fire Station Building Committee Chair. I'll keep this brief tonight, just to kind of update everybody where we are on the project because we do have a special town meeting in January dedicated, I think solely to the fire station project. So a quick summary, fall of, in the summer and fall of 2021, the committee worked with the town to hire an OPM, who is the Vertex Company's, an architect, Doran Whittier. Since that time, we've been meeting regularly on alternating Wednesdays at six o'clock to move this project along. We've met and received approval from town boards, including the Select Board, Zoning Board, Planning Board, and Design Review Board. In addition, to date, we've hosted five community events. Three have been at the fire station, one at the senior center, and one at the library. We've had decent attendance, and people have asked good questions. We are going to have another one on December 14th as the special town meeting approaches, 7:15 at the library, so hopefully some people can attend and ask good questions. I think, I've talked about this at the last couple town meetings, so people might already know this, but this project kind of came about, there was a public safety project that was obviously voted on back in 2016 for a variety of reasons. The police station portion of that project went over budget, and the fire station portion of the project was not able to move forward. There was enough money left over that we were able to form, the town was able to form a, a new building committee, take a fresh look at the project, and bring us to where we are today. Since that time, the fire department has continued to work in substandard conditions, living in a trailer that's too small and working out of a building that was really designed primarily for the police department, and an apparatus bay that was built in 1960 and is much too small for their equipment. And the building has continued to deteriorate since that, that time, including structural deficiencies, and it's well past its useful life, which is why we're proposing a new building built at the rear of the site instead of trying to reuse the existing building. As far as where we are in the process, the architects is actually finalizing the plans this week, and they'll go out to bid. We expect to have contractors' bids back just before Christmas, and the intent is to have a contractor's bid in hand when we come to the special town meeting on the 11th. So when we, when we present the project cost that night, it'll be based on an actual contractor bid, not an estimate. Right now, the project is currently estimated at, at $25 million. That's partially offset by the $3.3 million that was remaining from the previous project, but again, that's an estimate. We're hoping it comes in lower. We'll see when, when the project is bid in December. As far as outreach methods, as I mentioned, we're going to have a community event on December 14th at 7:15 at the library. If you can make it, it's great. We also, like I said, have regular committee meetings. Our next one is on November 30th. So if you can attend that, those are at six o'clock typically at town hall in room 124. The website, there's quite a bit of information that we've uploaded onto the town website. You can actually be brought right to the Fire Station Building Committee part of the website by clicking the QR code on, you might have seen a few of the informational boards when you were coming in. Those are actually going to be, we have about seven or eight of those. We're going to put them up around town. One in the town hall, one at the library, the senior center. I think there's even some private businesses that have agreed to, to put them up. So if you see them around town, again, QR code that you can click brings you right to the website. Frequently asked questions that we've answered on there, additional information on the project. You can actually watch every video of every meeting that we've had if you want to catch up on the project if you, if you haven't been following along. Like I said, next community event is December, on December 14th. If you want to tour the fire station yourself and see the conditions that they're living in, the chief is here tonight. You can certainly set something up or, or just come by. He'd be more than happy to take you around. So hope to see you in December and hope to see you in January. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Bakkenouski for the Energy Committee.
Dave, I have a small cold. I'm fighting, so that's why I'm standing here. Andy Bakkenouski on the Energy Committee with a '21 Noggett took Ave. Got three things to talk about tonight. Can everybody hear? This is working? I just added a fourth, just to follow Kevin. In terms of the Energy Committee's review of what's gone on at the new fire station, the old fire station, the base numbers that we had back in 2018, 2019, when we started this work, had what's called the E, the energy unit, that's, that was for the existing fire station is 130, and this proposed building is 30. I think Kevin saw my email from a few days ago that may not necessarily agree with that, but it's going to be at least half, so that obviously identifies a significant lower cost of running the building. So, so sorry for the detour. So we are now into our second phase, finishing up our second phase of work, mostly energy work at the H Olive Day. Grant money that we'd received was $146,000. Utility, utility rebates totaled a little over $23,000, and there was $47,000 of in-kind work, meaning basically Matt Hefner's time, his, his crew, probably some of the, the maintenance budget that would have been spent anyways to deal with this. What we're looking at for a dollar savings is just a little over $28,000, even though it may seem like, like quite a bit to spend for such a little return. Realize these numbers are based on three-year-old energy use, and I think we've all have seen our energy bills have gone up. Most notably is oil savings is about 1,100 gallons a year, so that's $5,000 in today's market. So it's, it's been pretty significant. Energy, electric costs about 87,000 kilowatts, and an average home uses 10,000 kilowatts a year, maybe a little bit more, maybe a little bit less. So needless to say, we, we're, we're making progress on things. We have a, I think we're probably going to be taking a little bit of a break tonight, and just so everybody knows is that the Energy Committee did request, and we had a warrant article identified for this meeting, to do a study on the heating system, which I think that was Article Three or Article Four. That was, that was up there, the $375,000. We've simply run out of time. You know, we were hoping we could do a full study, look at alternative, other types of energy means of whether geothermal, heat pumps, you name it, just do the full gamut. The benefit of doing that, we could have bid the project as a 25A project, which looks at the savings that are generated as part of the project would then pay back the, the money that's borrowed. So, so there would have been some benefits, but we've simply just run out of time. The, the life expectancy of that boiler, we're well beyond the 15 years for a, for a commercial boiler. So that's, we're, we're just, we just, we're just stuck. So there's no, there's no getting around it. Work that's coming up, that we'll, we'll have to be looking at soon, those of you who haven't seen the roof of the Freeman Kennedy School, there's actually a solar system on there. The inverter is now 10 years old, and by clockwork, they say 10 to 12 years, it's dead. It's got to be replaced. So this is something that we're going to have to be looking at probably in the spring. At this point, given the, the fact we're coming into winter, production's way down, we can let it slide for a bit, and I'm not saying this out of, just out of saying delaying the cost. I mean, I, I do, I do enough solar installations and I do enough solar consulting to, this is the way to deal with it, and we'll just, we'll look at it in the spring. Costs to replace that inverter is probably in the $30,000 to $40,000 range plus, plus labor to put it in. And I can assure you that the newer ones are a lot more efficient as well as, they will last at least 15 to 20 years. And as, as we've, I've learned, you, you buy the longest possible warranty you can, which may cost you a little bit more, but having done a replacement project about six months ago, it was $99,000 for, to replace one inverter. And that's, you know, it's, this was, it was, it was an interesting project, but nonetheless, you know, it's the cost savings. If we had bought the additional warranty on that one, it would have been, you know, $70,000 cost savings. So, so we're, we're trying to deal with it. I know Jay gave me five minutes, I think I'm probably over that by now.
Yeah, you're like oh for $10,000 on sticking to your time limit. Finish up.
Sorry, 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 sorry. Yeah, but this is interesting stuff, isn't it?
It's highly interesting, Andy.
So, just want to kind of take, go back 10 years. When the Green Communities Act was, was put in place, this was kind of in response to the, the Romney administration back in 2004 where they issued a climate action plan, and this plan was basically an unfunded mandate, and I think a few of us in this room probably can, can know what we had to do to try and get some of these projects done. The goal of that climate action plan was to reduce state agencies to reduce 20% of their energy. And the problem was, how do you do this? There was funding created at the federal level. There was all kinds of iterations of different ways to get money to do the work. 25A is a, is an offshoot of that to a certain degree. But the interesting thing about that is when they started realizing that was being successful at the state level, and the Green Communities Act came down where funding was available, where the utilities were basically charging every single person in this room money based on the kilowatt usage that would fund the program. So realize that, you know, we, we've just been in the Green Communities Act for three years, but we've been paying into it for well over 12 at this point. So that's something to think about. So where this is going, the Baker administration just issued Executive Order 594 earlier this year, which is to electrify state agencies. The reason why they're doing that is because the green, the greening of the grid over the past 20 years has been so significant, they realized that that's the way that we're going to deal with the, the climate issue, as well as it's a lot more efficient to run less moving parts. It's, that's the way we're going. So given that, the fact that we have the executive order from 2004 and now the executive order for 2022 of electrification, this is where we need to go. And this is something that we're going to have to be looking at real closely. The existing police station is all electric. The fire station is all electric. What we need to do as a town is realize that we're kind of offsetting the cost to run a building with a natural gas, propane, fuel oil for going all electric. We need to start looking at other ways to create our own electricity. So this is where solar, large solar systems come in, or, and this is something that we need to look at, and it's, it's coming. It's coming. I mean, there's other towns I've worked with, and they're, they've been planning for a couple of years, and it's coming. So just be prepared that we're, we're going to have to do it. So ending on solar, I know everybody's energy costs is probably scaring them, and with electricity costs the way they are, if there is interest, I will put out on the town's website and work with Justin, just to more, as more of a, as a point of contact. Probably in late January, early February, we can do a workshop on residential solar, and if you guys are interested, we can, I can't, I'm not going to give recommendations for companies because some of them are fly-by-night and they come and go really quickly. There are established companies. You've probably seen Sunrun, you've seen Sunbug, you've seen, I don't know, probably half of the, the orange vans with the white lettering. I forgot the name of the company, but there's, there's a lot out there. But in terms of, I can give you information of what to look for and what not to look for, and, you know, what you, what you want to do. And bottom line is, you probably want to own the system because you're going to get the most bang for your buck that way. So, okay. 12 minutes and 10 seconds, right?
You are killing Todd Lindmark's over and under prediction for the evening.
Did I, did I win? No? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. I got an email that Norfolk, Donna Jones for Historical Commission.
Hello, Donna Jones, North Street Associate Member of the Norfolk Historical Commission. We made some sweatshirts for our 2020 anniversary, which we celebrated in 2021, but I'm wearing one of those sweatshirts. We still have them for sale. They're, one's blue, one's red. They're out on the table outside. They're a discount price of $15 for one, 25 for two. We also have written at least three different books. They are from people's recollection of the town. Thelma Ravinsky took audio cassettes of interviews with people, and she, she made these two different books. Bertha Fails wrote a book in, in the 1930s. She made handwritten transcript books, and over time, it got transferred, and we published the books. So see me outside if you're interested in the items. Thank you.
And if you have any questions of any of the speakers, there's not, none of these are debated or discussed here in town meeting, but I'm sure Andy will be happy to chat with you. You will get your money's worth on, and as well as Mr. Champagne. Okay, so moving on to Article Eight, which is to accept some property tax exemptions. Mr. Hurwitz, I believe.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 22G.
Mr. Hurwitz?
The advisory committee recommends approval of this article. In accordance with existing Mass General Laws, the town currently allows for a property tax exemption for military veterans which meet certain criteria. Article Eight adopts an additional existing provision in the Mass General Laws allowing for this exemption to be extended to those whose residence is owned by a real estate trust. This provision requires the individual to both be a beneficiary of the trust and live in the property in order to receive the exemption, which protects the town from any misuse of this provision.
It's been moved and seconded. Seeing no one at the mics, this requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no? It passes unanimously. Article Nine is road acceptance. Mr. G. Welcome to the advisory board, Mr. G.
Thank you. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town accept Redwood Circle as a public way as laid out by the Select Board, and further to authorize the Select Board to accept any fee, interest, easement, or appurtenances in or upon such ways and execute any documents in connection This is an article to, for the town to accept Redwood Circle in the Noon Hills acre subdivision as a public way. The advisory committee voted unanimously to support the article.
And while not absolutely required, I assume the planning board is in agreement with this acceptance? Yes, so I'm, I'm seeing nods there. Any questions, comments on this roadway acceptance? Any questions, comments on this roadway acceptance? Seeing none at the mic, this requires a simple majority vote, there's no appropriation involved. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, no? It passes unanimously. Article Ten is another roadway acceptance. Mr. G.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town accept Warren Drive, Farrington Avenue, and Hemingway Place as public ways as laid out by the Select Board, and further to authorize the Select Board to accept any fee, interest, easement, or appurtenances in or upon such ways, and execute any documents in connection therewith. So this article will allow the town to accept Warren Drive, Farrington Avenue, and Hemingway Place in the Fox Run subdivision as public ways. The Advisory Committee voted unanimously to support this article.
And again, Planning Board's on board with that, I see a nodding head. Any questions, comments on this roadway acceptance? Seeing none, again, a majority vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, no? It passes unanimously as well. Article Eleven is a zoning change. Mr. Garrity.
Mr. Moderator, I move to amend, yep, I move to amend the Norfolk zoning bylaw, Section 310 dash 3 dot 2 dot A, location of districts as included in the document entitled, November 15, 2022, special town meeting, warrant Article 11.
It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Garrity.
Haltingly moved. This article modifies the downtown zoning by extending the B1 district 30 feet into the federated church property along the edge of the church property that is adjacent to the fire station. This change is being sought to facilitate the safe and efficient use of the fire station property as a site for a new fire station. The church property is currently zoned residential, and the zoning bylaw requires a property in B1 that borders a residential property to maintain a 30-foot wide green belt of plantings, of two rows of evergreen trees at least six feet tall at the time of planting. Given the layout of the lot, and certain drainage structures already in existence on the lot, which would be maintained even with the development of a new potential fire station, this required green belt would make it prohibitively difficult to appropriately lay out the driveways in the safest and most space-efficient manner. This change does not appear to have any negative impact on the church property and current operations. The Advisory Committee voted six to two to recommend approval of this article.
And there is a picture, it was on the, there was a separate handout on the sheet, and it was also included with the warrant. The Planning Board.
Good evening. Chad Peck, Planning Board Chair, Ten More than one mark. As you saw, as Jay mentioned, the printout in the warrant was black and white, hard to see the shaded areas, so we did provide a handout. The proposed change is exactly as what you had mentioned, and the Planning Board supports it. We also have support from the Fire Chief and the Federated Church.
Excellent. Any questions and comments on this zoning change? Come on down.
Why don't we want a barrier of some kind between the firehouse and the church? I don't understand, in good planning, to have something like that. Either a fence, if you don't want the evergreens, but just to have it open, grass area, I don't think is in the beauty of this town.
Mr. Peck.
So as you can see from the handout, on the backside of the handout, we showed a rendering of the fire station, and it shows that we are anticipating having that 30-foot buffer of staggered trees all the way up to the front of the building. The biggest concern is where that driveway is positioned, you're going to have minimal site distance for those emergency vehicles exiting the garage of that building to C, to the west, to the rotary. So by eliminating those trees, you're going to have that site distance, which is going to allow the proper, safe usage of the emergency vehicles when they want to exit.
Thank you. Seeing no additional questions or comments on the floor. This requires a two-thirds vote, because it is a zoning amendment. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Believe it passed unanimously, and at the very least with a strong two-thirds majority. Okay, Article 12, we're going to break with our, we're going to depart a little bit from our normal procedure, where we have the Advisory Board make the first motion. As is noted in your materials, the Advisory Board recommended indefinite postponement. However, because the Planning Board put a significant amount of work in this, felt it might be helpful for town meeting to at least move it initially in the affirmative. So our first motion is going to be read by the Planning Board. Mr. Peck.
So, Mr. Moderator, I move that the town approve the changes for the zoning bylaws for the C4 zoning district as printed in the warrant.
It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Peck.
So in addition to Article 11, we do have a handout for this as well. So it shows on the one side, the GIS printout of the C4 zoning district. So I wanted to make sure everybody was aware of what we're talking about here. And the C4 zoning district includes Rivers Edge, it includes some power lines, it includes the, so over on the left side of that map, it looks like it's vacant land, and it is to some extent. It's our well, the Holbrook Well. And then you have the back of some developed residential properties there as well. So the, there is one vacant parcel there in Rivers Edge. The Planning Board feels, the Planning Board voted to move this forward, because it does modify, it modifies the language of the zoning article to add mixed-use buildings, and then the subsequent restrictions of construction to occupancy for commercial versus residential as the construction is built during that time. We do have, we did hear from the President of the HOA. So there was an HOA meeting there recently, a few weeks ago, where this was presented, and the residents of the HOA support this as well. I did also want to provide a little bit of comment to what was written into the warrant from Advisory.
Let's not do that.
Oh, okay.
We'll let the Advisory speak to themselves, and then you can respond if need be.
Perfect. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bechkovsky on behalf of the Advisory Board.
The Advisory Committee recommended indefinite postponement of this article. The article does allow for the C4 district to have mixed-use buildings and increases allowable height to 45 feet from the current 35 feet. As was mentioned, there's only one undeveloped lot within the C4 district, and we were told that the economic feasibility requires mixed use rather than purely commercial space. On the positive side, if it were developed, it would add property value and potential tax revenue for the town. Our concern, and the reason we decided to indefinitely postpone this article, was in discussions with the Planning Board, we asked, is this a zoning change for one undeveloped property or part of a larger town plan, and consistent with some of the other zoning board changes we've seen? There has also been, as the last article showed, other zoning changes made for one property, and we had concerns that rather than seek variances or other mechanisms through the town, we're changing the zoning, the zoning law, bylaw, for the entire zone, as opposed to addressing the specific needs of an individual lot. Because of that, we decided to recommend indefinite postponement, so the Planning Board could talk about how the C4 changes are consistent with the larger plan for the town, including other zoning changes that may be required for that long-term development plan.
But you're not, that's your recommendation, but there's no motion for indefinite postponement right now?
Correct. That was our thinking as an advisory committee.
Okay. All right. So, any questions, before we go back to the Planning Board for a counterpoint? Any questions, comments from others on the floor regarding this article? No, ladies first.
Little smaller, but that's fine. Hi, my name is Jennifer Cody, and I own Exhale School of Dance right here in Norfolk. I have owned my business for six years now. I survived.
You're a resident as well?
Yes, I live on Ten Brady Lane.
Great, thank you.
So I'm a resident and a business owner. I personally feel that this will help the community in so many ways. I think that we do need to think about responsible growth. I would potentially be one of the people that would be in this building. At this point, the center of town, we have grown, which is wonderful, and I am so proud and humbled to be part of the growth of Norfolk. But I do feel like what we're looking at right now is reasonable growth, which is really important. And I think that my landlord who is building is really looking at, looking at what the town needs, and also making sure that we're fitting the vision of that town. So that's important for me and several business owners in the community. It is extremely difficult to run a business in this town for many reasons, including the financial burden that we feel, because our rent is often a little bit larger than that of surrounding towns. So for me, this would be huge. I'm looking to grow, as are many other businesses. And I think that, right now, parking is very tight at 18 Union Street. We have many small children coming in at the same time as the bank. And I think for growth for us personally, we're looking at a new building with a costume closet and all the things that we need. So for us personally, and I also am a founder of the Norfolk Small Business Association. And being at those meetings, I do feel like we are in agreement that we need to see a little bit of growth. For us, it is not, for the small businesses, it is not about looking at unreasonable growth, right? It's about looking at how we can grow in a way that is foundationally good for all of us. So I think that this change would be huge for all business owners. Not only that, it would potentially open up 18 Union Street for others, as well as other spaces as well. So I really hope that we look at this as a growth responsibly for the town, and I just, I hope that this comes through. And I just wanted to come up and speak really quick. Yeah, so I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Peck.
So to follow up on what, the major concerns from Advisory, there was two major concerns that I heard from Advisory. One was the change in the height of the buildings. We're not proposing any changes in the height? No? I missed, maybe I missed? Okay. Okay. So misunderstood that. The other was regarding, is this part of a larger plan for the town? And yes, this is in alignment with the larger plan for the town. So we went back and looked at the zoning bylaws, we took that information, the purpose for, in the zoning bylaws, the purpose for the C4 district clearly states to encourage and spur mixed use and economic growth for the town. And then it references the master plan for the town. So yes, it does align with our town's master plan and the zoning bylaw purpose.
Thank you, Mr. Peck. Come on down.
Anthony Kennedy, 7 Margot's Way. Just wondering if there's any indication as to the size of the building and the use of the building? So the business component, I'm curious what, if there are any particular restrictions?
So I will let the Planning Board respond, and then Ms. Klein as to that, if you could perhaps describe, not with respect to a particular application, but how the bylaw change relates to the size or the structures that could be located there.
Correct. So this change would allow mixed use throughout the C4 district. There is currently one vacant lot that is, could be developed. We don't know what the plans are for that at this time. It would be, a developer would need to come before the Planning Board with a set of plans that then the Planning Board would have to approve. The size limits are dictated in the current bylaw at 35 or 45 feet, depending on what type of building is there. So we don't, we don't know right now what that would be. Do you have anything else to add, Rich?
I'll recognize our planner, Mr. McCarthy, briefly.
Thank you. So the size of what potential would be there would also be dictated by the parking requirements for the district, as well, not the district, but as well as the setbacks. There are specific setbacks and buffer areas that are part of that zoning district. So we'd have to work within that particular footprint.
Thank you. Ms. Klein, and then over here to this mic.
Thank you for that question. That's exactly one of the reasons why the Advisory Committee wanted to postpone it. I want to be clear, we weren't saying we don't want development in the town. What we want to see is, we want to see a comprehensive plan, we want to know what's going in, we want to know how long it's going to take, what it's going to look like, what type of businesses are going to be there. Now, with that said, not every developer has that plan, but we saw nothing. That, you have to understand, this happened three weeks ago, we had nothing. We had nothing from the developer, we had nothing, none of this information. They had yet to speak to the people who live in Rivers Edge. We didn't know if the residents of Rivers Edge wanted to see development. We spoke to no business owners, like Mrs. Cody, who owns Exhale. When they come to us, we can only vote on the information that we have at hand, and that was the information that we have at hand. Let's change the zoning bylaw for a developer with no additional information. If you'd like to see the discussions, you can go back and watch that meeting on YouTube. There was a lot of discussion about these exact topics. And with that said, they have done a lot of work in the last three weeks. Mr. Peck and I have been in constant contact, and he's kept me up to date on it. Again, it's not that we opposed it, it's that we need to see a comprehensive plan before we can vote on a zoning bylaw change. These are permanent changes to the code for the town. So you have to be sure it's what you want to see. Because once you change it, it's changed for everyone. Not just that developer, not just that one specific building, it's changed for that district, whether it's the B1, or the C4, et cetera. When you change it, you are changing it for everyone. Now, that one only has one available lot that's undeveloped, but there are plenty of lots there that could be changed or altered in the future. And these zoning changes go into effect, this is something that you're going to deal with for the next 20 years. So that was our concern, I just wanted to be clear about that, so that no one thinks that we were just saying no, but we're being mean. We just wanted to see more information. And so we had suggested waiting until the spring, they ended up getting some stuff done ahead of time, so now it is up to you.
Thank you, Ms. Klein. At the mic.
Ann Coraglano, Barnstable Road. I want to know how often the zoning change or variance is put through? Is it a regular thing for something like this, for a mixed-use dwelling, or is it just this is the first time?
I'm not sure I understand the question, Ann. How often we do zoning changes?
Is this constantly a zoning change that people are wanting? Like, are they always asking for a variance to do this in front of the Planning Board? Is it a regular thing, and that this would save time and energy and money by not, like, constantly having it come up as a variance?
My guess, Ann, and Mr. Peck can correct me if I'm wrong, that the developer and perhaps the homeowners in Rivers Edge as well are seeking an opportunity with respect to a specific parcel. I don't believe there's been other applications for variances on this parcel. I could be wrong, but this, we're talking just about this.
I was just, that whole zone, though, is what I'm referring to.
The C4?
The C4. Even though there's only one lot left.
Well, I'm not sure there's just one lot left. I think it looks like there's one maybe developable lot left, but
Correct.
Again, I'm not going to get into hypotheticals. I'm not aware that there's been any applications, but, Mr. Peck, feel free to answer to the extent you can.
So with regards to a variance, it is currently, it's not an allowed use to have a mixed-use building there. So that's not an allowable use, so there is no variance or special permit or waiver that can be sought. So the only way to build a mixed-use building in the C4 is to actually add it in as an allowable use in the zoning bylaw change.
Thank you very much.
Yep, you're welcome.
Mr. Hadad?
Ed Hadad, 138 Red Maple Run. I am a resident of Rivers Edge. In general, the words, I don't, I know you don't want me to speak for other people, but in general, the residents of Rivers Edge want this lot developed. We had a meeting We had a meeting three weeks ago with the developer, and he presented his plans to a large group, over 60 people of the residents in the community, and it was very favorably received, very enthusiastically received, as a matter of fact. Like I said, the town, the residents want this last parcel developed. The reality is, is this is already a mixed-use area. We have residential and we have commercial, side by side. They're just not in one building, and that's what this bylaw will change. So the reality is, we already have mixed use there. It's just, it's just codifying into the zoning law, one building that will be this last mixed-use development in this parcel, so.
Thank you, Ed. People don't have to raise their hands either before they come down. Just come on down to the mic when you're, when you're ready to talk.
Hi, my name is Wayne Johnson, 116 Wildwood Road in Vares. And I'm not saying I'm for it or against it. I'm saying, as you presented, I would like a little more clarity as to what mixed use really means. We've heard, not only from the developer, but within the community, talking back and forth, a variety of different possibilities for this. So it would just need for me to be able to vote either way on it. I need a lot more clarity than there is out there right now.
So I'm going to allow the Planning Board to address what mixed use is. It's obviously a mix of residential plus, but for this particular parcel, what do you, does the Planning Board envision with this change? Mr. Peck.
So the mixed use would allow one building to have commercial on the first floor, and then residential on subsequent second or second and a half floors, depending on what the bylaws allow.
And by commercial, you mean either whether it's office or retail?
So I believe there's already, and Rich can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe there's already an approved master plan for that that includes a restaurant, and I'm not sure what else is there, but it was a very large restaurant. And so, so the developer would have to come back to the Planning Board for a plan modification to adjust the size of that commercial restaurant and such, so.
So that's all, and everyone will get a public hearing notice that's entitled to a public hearing notice to attend and try and hammer out those details.
Okay, the only other thing that is not being brought up here is the fact that there are going to be six condo units developed in addition to the mixed-use property, you know, the building? So the developer talked about a restaurant down below, 50-seat, and apartments up above, and it's my understanding also that in some of the prior board meetings, there's a necessity to have between one and two low-income use, or, and it's not clear whether that's going to be the condominiums or that's going to be the apartments.
So there will be a low-income component of this, whatever is built. We'll have to follow our current bylaws for that. We, I can't speak to what he's exactly going to build, so I can't tell you how many low-income units there would be there until, until he does come to the Planning Board. And full disclosure, I wasn't part of the original site plan approval, so I don't recall exactly what was there, and I would have to defer to Rich on what was previously approved. But, and also, I guess to follow up on what you talked about is, yes, there was, what was presented at the HOA meeting was a very simple graphic that showed some freestanding, like townhouse-type buildings, and then one mixed-use building on the street. That is not a final plan. I mean, he would have to come forward to the Planning Board. So that was a conceptual plan that was just put together quickly and easily, just to, just to make sure that there was a community endorsement of it.
I think there's a community endorsement.
I don't want to have discussion back and forth. This is your third. I'm going to let you ask another question, but we're not having this back and forth.
Just, just a comment that, now I lost my thought, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, and then Ms. Valley after that.
Mr. Moderator, Aaron Hunt, 266, 266 Main Street. To the Advisory Board's question about the applicability of this zoning change, the handout shows a C4 district. Is this the only C4 district in town? And if it is, it would be helpful to see the graphic and explain what portions of that district are being talked about as potentially developable.
Well, there is a handout that's available that shows the parcel in question. There's some additional undeveloped land that may have some challenging access, but there is some additional C4 land, it appears. Ms. Valley.
Beth Valley, 93 Red Maple. I've lived in town since 1980, but I've lived at Rivers Edge for seven years now. The original plan for Rivers Edge to be developed in the C4 district is strictly Rivers Edge plus the Pin Oaks development. That is the C4 district, which is in, I don't know how many buildings there are, homes there are in Pin Oaks, I'm going to guess around 40. We have 140 homes in Rivers Edge, plus we have the commercial building. The original concept for Rivers Edge was to have 150-seat restaurant in this undeveloped section of land. That became quickly unfeasible for the developer, for the owner of this property to do, and so the land has sat vacant, and it's a bit of an eyesore to those of us who live there and take pride in the buildings. And it's been a problem for the owner because he's trying to come up with a feasible way to finish off this land and finish the development for us, really. His proposal, the mixed use, he did 18 Union Street, that's been very successful. He sees that there's, that that's a way to make this development feasible of this last piece of land, which is kind of an eyesore to us, and we'd love to have it done. Just, the residents have a fair amount of trust in the owner developer to include us in the process. When he came to meet with us, he was very clear that his concept plan, which was just a concept plan, to give us an idea of what he was talking about, was economically feasible to him, but he also said he would include us in the path along the way and address all our concerns. I think it wouldn't be fair to say that the majority of people at Rivers Edge agree with it, but there was, he was received very warmly at our highly-attended residents' meeting.
Thank you, Beth. To the mic on my right.
Marty McNulty, 125 Winterberry Way. I'm in the shadow of this building we're talking about. There's no question, Tom is a great, great builder and stuff, but when we change C4, then his current commercial building becomes eligible to make apartments for other people up top, if I read it correct, including an assisted living. So the concerns are there, and further to that, if you're going to have all this building there, you might want to put a sidewalk in. We are the only section of 115 that doesn't have a sidewalk to a commercial building from anywhere in Norfolk. So that's, that's a concern. The other concern is, if they put too much in this new zoning they do, you want to consider the real estate tax value you might lose from Rivers Edge and Pin Oaks. Thank you very much. Have a nice night.
Thank you for your comments. Ms. Jacobson.
Hi, Sue Jacobson, Affordable Housing Director for the town of Norfolk. Really just a comment on low-income housing. The town has worked very hard with the select board members and the Norfolk Municipal Affordable Housing Trust to incorporate affordable housing in the town of Norfolk. So I just had to come up and make sure we, we don't look at this as a bad thing and use terms that we try not to use anymore. This is really for hard-working people that want to enjoy and live in our community. Thank you.
I see no further people at the mic. Okay, this is a zoning change. I'm going to try and do this on a voice vote, this is a two-thirds vote. If I cannot do it, Mr. Bakanowski, and is Mr. Terrio here as well? Yep, if, if, there he is. If I, I'll need you to help count the votes if you're willing to do that. So let's see if we can do it with a voice vote first, and then maybe a hand count if we can't do it that way. If you are in favor of this zoning change, please say aye.
Aye.
If you are opposed, please say no.
No.
Okay, let's try a show of hands here. All those in favor of the zoning change, please put one hand up, please. All those opposed to this zoning change, please put a hand up. I think it's very clearly two-thirds approval here, and the motion carries. Seeing no challenge, no clapping, I see you over there. Stop. Okay, Article 13. Ms. Terrio, welcome back to the Advisory Board.
Mr. Moderator, I move to amend the Norfolk Wetlands Protection Bylaw Section 300-5.A and Section 300-6.A as included in the document entitled, "November 15, 2022, Special Town Meeting, Warrant Article Number 13."
It's been moved and seconded. Ms. Terrio.
Thank you. Mr. Moderator, Article 13 would amend the Norfolk Wetlands Bylaw Sections, as noted, the 300s, 5 and 6As, with new language to include a certificate of mailing as an approved notification to abutters. This method of notification is consistent with other towns' wetland bylaws, and the definition of the language to be added has been reviewed by Town Council and approved.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Mr. Rosenberg, yes?
Can you, can you explain what this new method is replacing? That is, if this didn't pass, what would the method of notification be?
My understanding, Mr. Rosenberg, is that now it has to be either certified mail or hand delivery, and this just, it adds a third option where someone is certifying that they did in fact mail it in lieu of certified mailers, which can get very expensive.
Thank you.
I think I got that right? Right? Okay. Okay, seeing no other questions or comments on Article 13. It is a bylaw change, but it is a general bylaw, so it only requires a majority vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. It passes unanimously, and I believe that concludes our business. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
To adjourn.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.